Hi.
Hi Sherri, Paul Orzell.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Uh, this is Sherri Johnston, I'm your alternate.
I know, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm doing a little early just because I didn't sure whether I could get it all, everything set on my computer and stuff, so. But, I had no problem.
Yeah, you're good.
Good, thank you.
Yep, perfect. Alright, you can go on mute and then, um, do you see at the bottom of the page?
Yep.
And just go on mute, you can stop your video, whatever you need.
Hey Paul, hey Sherri.
Hey, hey Dan. I'm assuming you've got no video, right? Right now?
Uh, no, I had video.
I don't see you.
Uh. Uh, hold on.
I see Dan Burey audio, then I see host account with just a blank screen.
Let me, uh... Hold on. It was working before.
Sherri, do you see Dan on your screen?
No, mine is black right now, I don't know why.
Okay.
There we go.
There you are.
That's weird.
Now you're gone again. There you are.
It only works on...
Now you have an audio connection as well, is that, is that giving you a conflict?
No, because I called in on my phone.
Okay.
Hmm.
I can see you now.
Yeah, I'll just leave the settings up the whole time because it seems to make the video work. Mm-mm. Not now, it won't work. Yeah, it just, uh... It's been there. Oh, that might be it. Okay, there we go. No?
(laughing) It keep freezing. Up.
Yeah, I don't know, if I, if I leave the settings, it stops working, so. Oh my God, this is annoying. My video may not work the whole time, but you'll have my audio.
Okay. Hi Mary Jo.
I tried to get the mic fixed on my computer because I was told I had a mic and then, uh, the guy after about fifteen minutes told me I have no mic, so that's why I have to do the phone.
Hi Paul, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Yes. We're all going out to eat after this, right? (laughing)
Who logged on fifty minutes ago?
I don't know. Mike Miller, are you on? I see.
Yeah, somebody logged on fifty minutes ago, that's why I was confused when it started. Paul, just make sure to remember, um, to amend the agenda and make the, uh, application announcement at the beginning.
Yes.
And do you want the, the language on the, uh, the application, or do you want me to just tell you during the meeting?
No, let's just do it during the meeting.
Okay.
Now we're, um... Right.
Good evening.
Hello. So I see Mr. Miller, Sherri Johnston as the alternate, and I don't see another commission, any other commission members. Hello, Mr. Miller. Mr. Barnes, I have two of the three alternates. Alan is on. Hello Alan.
Reading. Got it working again, that's good. I'm gonna go mute for a minute.
Okay. Jane Marsh is on, hello Jane.
Hello.
Jane and Alan, one, two.
Paul?
Yes.
Could you just remind everybody at the beginning to, to mute themselves when they're not speaking, just so we can try to prevent any feedback?
Yes.
Hey Jen, are you on? And Dana?
Okay, I don't see Tammy.
Uh, I talked to Tammy today, she said she was calling in, uh, she's on vacation.
Yeah, she texted me a few minutes ago saying, um, she might not be able to get on the call just because, well, at least maybe she can call in, but she couldn't do internet because she didn't have internet, or internet was really poor. That was at, uh... 6:18.
Okay, then, we will probably start. And I will probably seat Mr. Barnes. Mr. Barnes is sitting right next to me here in the same room, obviously. Um, okay, I'm gonna begin and if... Like if, uh... Mr. Barnes, if, uh... Tammy gets to log in or calls in. And of course your, your, your term will end abruptly, so. But for right now, this is, good evening everyone, this is the February 2022 meeting of the Old Lime Zoning Commission. We have...
Paul, just real quick.
Yes.
Can, can, uh, call in user five, if you're on your phone called in, could you mute yourself? We're getting some background noise and I don't want to have to mute you.
Okay.
So one of the people called in, could you please mute yourself?
Whoever is either on the Webex call or has dialed in, we need you to mute, please.
Yeah, I'm just gonna mute him, Paul.
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
This is, again, the, um, February meeting 2022 of the Old Lime Zoning Commission. This evening, we are meeting by Webex and by phone. For our permanent members, we have Alan Todd, bear with me as I go through the screen here. We have Michael Miller, Jane Marsh, where is, what happened to Jane?
Here.
Oh, there, there, okay, just don't see you. We have Jane Marsh, Alan, Michael, Jane, myself, Paul Orzell. One of our members is not here, Tammy Tenorello, so for the interim or for the rest of the meeting, I will be seating Michael Peter Barnes, one of our alternates, for, uh, for the meeting. Okay, I just, again, I'll, I'll remind you again that if you're not participating in the meeting or making comments of any, of, of any sort, to please keep yourself on mute, we have the ability to do a carte blanche mute, but I don't really want to do that. Before we begin the meeting formally, I would like to introduce and welcome our newest alternate onto the board. She is Sherri Johnston, Sherri joins us, uh, as a new alternate, replacing, uh, Catherine Close. So, Sherri, welcome to the zoning commission. We are happy to have you here and excited to have you here. And also to, uh, to have you with your knowledge base, um, is very, very exciting, so, good evening and welcome.
Paul, again, if you just called in on your phone to the, to the Webex meeting, please mute your phone. I know I muted call in five and I'm assuming they called back in again, but you need to mute your phone or I'm gonna be fighting with you all day, we hear all the background noise coming from you, so please, if you called in on your phone, please mute yourself. I just muted him again, Paul, so I'll just have to play this game.
That's fine if we have to just do that.
What key do they have to hit on their phone to mute themselves? It might be advisable that we tell them.
I mean, it's, it's a mute button on iPhone.
Hit your mute button.
Okay, I didn't know if there was like a specific number, numeric number that the system required.
Well, I'm familiar with the Apple phone and you simply mute it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so, I've got that and I've got that. Um, the first thing, um, I, I do need to do is that we need to amend the agenda to, uh, include a new receive and set public hearing. Dan, could you please go through that?
Yeah, so we would just need a motion to receive and set a public hearing date, hopefully for the March meeting, if you guys think that's okay. For ten Vista Drive here in Old Line, uh, it's for the Pitt LLC. It's a proposal to put in kind of, uh, I think a softball field and some, some, uh, indoor recreational facilities in one of the buildings in that small industrial park just north of 95, one four mile over.
Okay, um, I will take a motion that we receive and set a public hearing for the Vista Drive, um, for the March meeting.
I would, hello.
Okay, second.
Alan, I have a second.
I'll second it, Jane.
Seconded by Jane Marsh. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, abstain and motion passes 500, that is set for next month, March. Okay, the other thing that I would like to make mention before we begin the meeting in earnest is that the continued public hearing for item number two, the special permit application to modify the special permit application approved on July 13th, 2020 to allow construction of two self-storage buildings on property located at 224 Shore Road, Mar Holdings LLC applicant. That item has been continued until March, until next month, and will not be discussed at all this month. So if you are on the phone specifically for that item, be advised that we will not be discussing that this month, that has been moved to the month of March.
Hey Paul, I just wanted to clarify now, I think about it, we will be discussing under new business though, the, uh, extension of the prior approval.
Correct.
The new application for two buildings is continued, but the application for four buildings that was approved uh, about a year and a half ago, and, and the extension of that, uh, permit, it will be discussed.
Correct, okay. Alright, and we can begin. The first item on the agenda in the continued continuation of public hearings is the special permit application to allow Miami Beach Association sewers and associated improvements, Miami Beach Association applicants. Do we have representatives for the applicant here?
Yes, my name is Doug Brizzy, I'm from Fussin' O'Neill. Um, I'm also joined by Keith Mikulinski from Fussin' O'Neill as well.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi there.
We have six new exhibits too, if you want me to read them.
Okay, sorry, Madam Secretary.
Uh, we have exhibit G, which is a letter from Tom Metcalf dated November 6th, 2021. We have exhibit H, a letter from Fuss and O'Neill, Read Tom Metcalf Comments, dated November 23rd, 2021. We have exhibit I, a letter dated December 9th from Fuss and O'Neill requesting a continuation of the application until the January 2022 meeting. Exhibit J, email from Marcy Ballint, DEEP, dated January 6th, 2022 with comments. Uh, exhibit K, a letter dated January 25th, 2022 from Tom Metcalf with comments. And exhibit L, a letter dated February 4th, 2022 from Fussin' O'Neill, responses to Tom Metcalf's letter.
Okay. Thank you Jane. Alright, so Doug, if you want to, uh, reengage, please.
Yes, um... Good evening everyone, my name is Doug Brizzy, I'm a project manager with Fussin' O'Neill and here, um, this evening I'm, uh, presenting on behalf of Miami Beach Association. Back in November, if you recall, I did give a presentation to the board regarding the improvements that we're looking to implement in Miami Beach Association. Uh, this is largely driven by a consent order for a community pollution project. Uh, so we are looking to implement sanitary sewers in the area that will primarily be installed in the roadways with service laterals that extend to each individual property. In addition to the sanitary sewer improvements, we are doing some storm drainage improvements. And then lastly, some road restoration, um, improvements as well. That's kind of a brief overview, not in great detail, because I know I presented back in November.
Right. Okay. I will, um, ask you, um, if you'd like, at least for the commission and for those, uh, online. I have a question, Tom Metcalf's letter dated January 25th indicates, and, and you can just, uh, enhance this a little bit, design and construction of a public sewer conveyance system, storm wa- stormwater drainage improvements and rotor improvements and repairs. The drainage, can you, can you just talk a little bit more about the drainage improvements that are being proposed?
Well, uh, I'll defer to Keith, who is Keith Mikulinski from Fussin' O'Neill, who, uh, was the project manager for the storm, storm.
Okay.
Okay, um, well, in, in summary, um, the majority of the drainage improvements proposed are, uh, consist essentially of replacing, um, in kind, um, the existing stormwater infrastructure that's already at the site. In some cases, we will be increasing the size of pipes slightly, um, where, uh, well, site conditions allow it. Right now, we're constrained by a couple issues, just with the site topography, um, and, and allowable cover-on pipe, so we really can't increase the pipe sizes very much, so for the most part, um, we're just, uh, replacing in kind, uh, deteriorated infrastructure. And, um, just for reference, most of the stormpipe sizes in the roadways in the, in the association are about, are between six and eight inches in diameter, so they're quite small by, uh, by stormwater drainage standards. And in some cases, we will be increasing, say, a six-inch pipe to an eight-inch pipe, or an eight-inch pipe to a 10-inch pipe, but that's pretty limited. Um, no changes are proposed at this time to the outfall structure, uh, that goes across the beach that, that, that carries Swan Brook into, uh, Long Island Sound. Uh, and in addition to that, um, but we are proposing, uh, to replace the existing, um, stream crossings on, uh, Clifton Road and, and Liberty Street in, in the associations, those will be replaced with, um, well, essentially box culverts, the existing, uh, crossings. Uh, I think on Clifton Street is, are two 24-inch concrete pipes and on Liberty Street, uh, it is a, uh, it is a 42-inch CMP and they'll both be replaced with, um, six-inch, six-inch wide, uh, or six foot wide, uh, box culverts.
Well, I think you're muted.
Well, that's, that's another question that I had on, on Tom's letter. It says there are a number, and I'm, and I'm not sure that, if I'm looking at some of the dates on these letters, that they, they may have, may have been fulfilled and they may not have been. Uh, it indicates that there are a number of reviews, approvals and permits that must be secured prior to construction. And I know that I'm looking at your response dated February 4th on reviews, approvals and permits. And the response is acknowledged, Miami Beach Association is working to procure the appropriate permits. And I came across another piece of information from Marcy Ballint. That indicates, and I, and I have a note here saying that this, this may or may not be in process, but it says that... It says to date, we, uh... December 28th, we requested additional information from Fussin' O'Neill. To date, we have not received the response regarding these requests. They have, um, no request for permits. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about all of the reviews, approvals and permits, because there was also another indication regarding the... Bear with me for a second, that was regarding the, the Brook. We've got notes all over the place there. Liberty Street and Clifton Street bridges. And Tom is indicating that those permits may or may not have an intent to deep yet. I, I just need for you to discuss all of these, please.
Yeah, I can, Keith, if you want, I can take a first stab at it and then you can supplement it, um, as you like. Uh, I think the main permit that's in question with the comments from Marcy as well as Tom is the structures, dredge and fill application, which needs to be submitted to DEEP. That has been submitted to DEEP, um, we are in the midst of just working through the fee that needs company that, um, application. Because DEEP is saying they're not recognized as a municipality, but, um, technically they have special legislative, so that, in summary, that application has been submitted, um, we're just working through what that fee needs to be. Uh, other, other permits that have also been, um, mentioned in some of the comments include the flood management certificate, which is another permit that's acquired from DEEP. That has been procured and that was, I believe, attached as a copy to the, uh, January response comments that we had from Tom. And then, um, we are also in the midst of currently procuring a general permit for stormwater construction activities from DEEP and that will be submitted to them imminently.
Okay.
And then, I think there was also reference, um, the culvert crossings are both tightly influenced as well as inland wetland, um, in- influenced.
Right.
I believe the one is Clifton Street, that cross the culvert crossings. An inland wetlands, um, application and approval has already been procured from the town vote line.
Okay, and Tom indicates that he has not reviewed the structural aspects of the proposed bridges.
He should have been provided with a full set of those plans, um, upon receipt of his, uh... upon receipt of the first round of comments.
So if this, Tom's letter is January 25th, is... Is there an update between January 25th and February 14th?
Browse to my sphere. I think he's just, I think in his, I think in his comment there, he's just referencing that he hasn't reviewed the structural details, but he was provided with all the structural drawings as part of the set.
That, that's the way I understand it, Paul, is that he, he will only review those things if we ask him specifically to review them.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, well, it's not necessary for you guys to have an okay from Tom on how this is gonna be constructed, it's just the proposal, they'll have to go through all the necessary engineering reviews and stuff like that to, to get that done, so that, that we reviewed and looked at.
Okay. Those are all the questions I had. Anyone else on the commissions? Have any questions?
Nope.
Good? Can I open this up? Can I open this up to public comment? Okay, I will, I will do that. So if no one else on the commission has any questions of Fussin' O'Neal, I will open up the floor to public comment regarding this public hearing. I will put in some rules. Go ahead, Dan.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I was just getting to the, to that. But I guess, you want me to just go over it? If you're on the computer, just a refresher, if you haven't done this before in a long time, there's a raise hand function. So go to your name and a little handle up here. Click on that and it'll queue me to let, let us know, you know, what order the questions are in. I guess keep your responses three to five minutes or so. And if you need to come back, we, the board can come back to you. And also, please direct all your questions to the board and they'll funnel your question to the, the appropriate person to answer that for you, just so we don't get in the back and forth.
Okay, is everyone clear on that? Okay, so three to five minutes, preferably more like three. We ask you, I'm going to ask you if your comments could be as, as difficult as it is always, that they are fact-based, that they are, you try to kind of hold off the emotional comments and, and give us something, if there's something that's really fact-based. That provides the commission with much more information that we could then kind of act on and go back and get, get answers to. So that's what I would ask you to do, please, is to, is to make your comments constructive and make them fact-based. So with that being said, Dan, are you seeing anyone raising their hand to speak? Is there anyone wanting to speak?
Not as of yet. I, I don't know. Maybe one of the calling users may have a question.
Okay. Anyone either on the line or via WebEx that would like to comment on the Miami Beach Association sewer and storm drainage infrastructure project? Okay, that sounds like we're good. Okay, if that's the case, then if anyone else on the commission, if everyone else on the commission is good, I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing on the sewer and storm drainage Miami Beach Association.
Make that motion.
Motion by, by Jane Marsh. Is there any discussion?
Second.
Second by Alan. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is there any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing then for the Miami Beach sewers at this point is closed. Okay, again, the second item regarding 224 Shore Road is continued until the month of March. Okay, getting into our regular meeting, the special permit application to allow Miami Beach Association sewers and associated improvements, Miami Beach Association applicant. Have we any discussion? Any thoughts?
I have a question that we seem to have a number of open questions. We don't have complete answers yet. It doesn't feel comfortable that we're at a point of closing this or reaching a decision. I'm not sure what our path forward is at this point.
I, I do agree that we do have a lot of open permits that have not been satisfied.
Definitely interested. I'm sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead, Michael.
As I say, I'm definitely interested in that structures fill and dredge permit and how they plan to address that one. I guess they said they filed it, but when I read that letter, it said they didn't file it. I don't know when their submission for that structures fill and dredge permit was. I kind of thought maybe they should keep the public hearing open. I don't know if they want to respond to any of that, but it's too late now. I just.
We closed the public hearing because we are out of time. So.
Okay.
Well, we don't, but that being said, the commission does not need to take any action on this this evening. We can wait.
I mean, also an option, if you want to condition the approval that, you know, these three permits are received. That, that's also a possibility.
Well, and if there's the one that makes their application change, they already know they have to come back and they didn't ask for that, they didn't ask us to hold it open. So to me, I'm assuming that that means they're ready to at least believe that DEP is going to give them a close enough approval to what they're submitting, that they won't have to come back here. But I don't think myself that we really need to keep our part of the review open just because these other permits are outstanding. There, there are permits that require other commissions to do or other entities to do their job. We can make the final, you know, permit conditional on, on all the permits being obtained, but I don't think we should make our decision, hold that decision up until everybody else has decided. Unless we have some other objections.
Right, that's a good point.
I mean, my personal feeling is that we understand that there are difficulties down in the beach areas regarding water. We all know what they are. And I think the applicants are saying that they can't fix everything because they have design constraints and they probably have money constraints and applicant constraints. So they're doing the best they can. So I don't think by approving it, we are also seen as fixing everything that might not be perfect down there. It's a condition that is changing probably every year anyway.
Right, and I, yeah, and I, that's, that's been noted. I, you know, that's very, very true, Jane, very good point.
I just think, go ahead.
It won't fix everything.
Yep.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Jane, on that one, definitely.
So then it, it makes sense that we go ahead and take action on this item and make it conditional that all of the permits and all of the reviews and all of whatever state items local are satisfied before final approval is, is provided by land use.
Can you do that up, Dan? Can you make a, an approval for us that'll say all the required steps that need to happen besides our own?
So while I was listening, the three permits that I thought I heard mentioned were the structures dredges and fill permit, the flood permit and the general stormwater discharge permit from DEP. Those were the three main permits that I had heard listed from your memo. Certainly, if you'd like, we can make that a condition that those three permits are obtained prior to administrative, administrative approval being granted.
Yes, I, I totally agree with that. Was there another one with the Clifton, Swan? Clifton, Liberty Street and Clifton Bridges again? But is that part of what you said, the see permitting by the CTD for the Liberty Street Bridge may be necessary as the water course and wetlands in this area are depicted as tidally influenced?
Yeah.
Okay, we can certainly add a statement that those bridges or culverts receive, you know, all necessary approvals.
Okay. Doug, you had, Doug, you had your hand.
Yeah, am I allowed to just say one?
I wish Doc could see that it's closed. I know.
All right.
Right.
I think his input would be great right now, but yeah, we can't take it. Do you want me to phrase it instead that they receive all necessary permits as outlined in the memos from Tom Metcalf, Town Engineer and Marcy Belent from the DEP?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Yep.
Okay. All right. So that's the condition.
Is the.
And I'll, do you want me to be more specific on the actual dates of the memos? Or do you, do you think a blanket, and Jane, I guess I'm going to throw this out at you with your legal mind. Do you think a blanket statement that the memos from those two entities are fine, or do you want the dates and everything with that?
No, I think that any, just refer to any of the, the memos that come.
Once again, I'll say that there's someone that's dialed in or is on WebEx that is not muted because we're getting some background noise from your area. If I could ask you once again, please to mute?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll mute them in a minute. It's calling user six.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just to tell you, calling user six, we can hear your television, so. Okay, so I was just going to say the condition be that permitting is obtained as outlined in memos by Town Engineer Tom Metcalf and Marcy Belent from the DEP. Did that cover it?
All right, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I make that motion that we made, we approved this project referencing all the submissions that we got. So that we'll need Mr. Bray to indicate, you know, the various maps and plans and their dates so that we know what we're approving, but that we approve the submissions that we've received and the most recently dated submissions that we've received. Conditional on and conditioning our final administrative approval on the receipt of the other permits outlined in the letters from Tom Metcalf and Marcy Belent.
Okay, is there a second on that? Or is there any discussion? Let me ask any discussion first. Okay, a second? Alan, Todd, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes 500. Okay.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith, Doug. The other item, again, the special permit is being continued to March for 224 Shore Road. Okay, so we, I believe we've, item three, Dan, was the receive and set the public hearing for Vista Drive, right?
Right.
Correct.
So we've done that. So we're done with three.
No, no, no.
No, no.
You made a motion to add this to the agenda. I need to make a motion to set and receive the hearing.
I thought we already did.
I thought we did everything, but that's all right.
Well, you had to make the motion to add the item to the agenda. Now we're at that item. So now you just need to make the motion to set and receive for the March 14th.
I'll make that motion that.
Okay.
Application for softball fields, et cetera, at 10 Vista Drive be accepted and set down for the March hearing. At our March regular meeting.
I already did that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Miller. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained? Okay, that 10 Vista Drive will be the March 2022 zoning meeting. Even though we did it once before, we did it, we did it again. Okay, so number four, just to make sure, number four, Dan, we can move on now to the 224 Shore Road again? Okay.
Yep.
All right, so this is a request, Mar Holdings LLC for the special permit granted on August 4th, 2020 for the property located at 224 Shore Road for an 18-month extension for that approval.
Just a quick, I told you the wrong thing. I think it was approved in July, but it was effective after the appeal date, August 4th. So that would be when the time, the clock would start.
So on August 4th, so, so regardless, it, regardless, it's, it's ending this month, right? Or has ended?
Correct. And, and, and I was going to go into this later with the, the board, but basically in order to, I don't know, I don't want to say revoke, but for the permit to expire in the zoning regulation, notice needs to be given to the permit holder and a public hearing needs to be held in order to do so. So without that, regardless of the timeframe lapsing, that the permit has not expired. And I was going to talk to the board later about if this ever happens or occurs and, you know, how we want to handle that in the future.
Okay, well, let's, maybe I think for the, for the board, if you could explain, I know you and I have had extensive conversations on this. If you could explain why we have a special permit to modify the existing special permit on the agenda that's continued until next month? And then we have a request to continue or to extend, if you will, the original application that was approved in July or August of 2020. Maybe you can just take the, take the board through that.
I can explain that.
Okay.
Bob, Bob, right there. Bob, Bob, Don, the engineer, the project here, yeah, it'd be better if the applicant.
Oh, see, I didn't see his name. He's hiding. You're hiding on me.
Oh, sorry.
Don, you're incognito.
I, I wish I was. I have, I'd like to explain that.
Please.
We have, we have approval to build four buildings. And we'd like to maintain that approval subject to the approval of the modified permit. Because if we do not get the approval of the modified permit, we'll build the four buildings. And I have another question that my request for the extension, in my opinion, may have been unnecessary due to the Public Act Number 21-34, which is Substitute House Bill Number 6531, which was the COVID pandemic bill that is state statute. And on page 12, under section seven in that bill, and I'll, I'll read the paragraph. It's paragraph C, under section seven. And it says, notwithstanding the provisions of subsections A and B of this section, any special permit or special exception approval made under this section on or after July 1st, 2011, but prior to the effective date of this section that did not expire prior to March 10th, 2020, and that specified a deadline by which all work in connection with such approval is required to be completed shall expire not less than 19 years after the date of such approval. And the commission may grant one or more extensions of time to complete all or part of the work in connection with such special permit or special exception. So I think it, in my humble opinion, I think it's was automatically extended by this special Substitute House Bill already because of the COVID pandemic legislation. And that is the reason why we're here tonight is because of the lack of employees and supplies to do the work. So that's.
Bob, you're going to have to make a decision about whether you're asking us to do something or not. Because if you don't want us to do anything, we won't do anything. So you have to make that decision on your own.
Okay, I would, I would like to. Okay, I would, I would like to. We have a request for an extension, Jane. And it's unfortunate that, I know I talked to Dan about this earlier. But I understand that your counsel was not available. To render an opinion on this. But. I would like to, I guess I would like to. Have Frank, if you could. Comment. And Mike, are you on, Mike Cronin, are you on the line?
Um, I do see Frank, his video's off, but I don't, I'm assuming, oh, Frank, I'm sorry.
There's Frank, he's, he's on.
Yep.
Hi Frank.
I would, you know, like to table this until we actually find out what the, the House Bill that was passed in March of twenty. How that affects the approval date. So I actually, Jane, you're right, we're really not asking for anything tonight.
So you're saying you want to withdraw this for right now?
Yes.
Yep. Can, can we get an opinion? Is it possible?
What I'll do.
Table it, table it. Okay.
Yeah.
Is the commissioner, is the commissioner okay with that?
I am.
Yes. All right, so, so the item.
Yes.
So then we will table this for now and activate it when we, let's, let's try to get a, some information for next month if possible.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If we can.
Absolutely, Bob, could you say that, that statute language? So I can immediately give it to him straight away and I don't have to pay him more money.
I'll, I'll send you the public act.
Thank you, and yeah.
Could you give me the number of the public act again?
Public Act number twenty-one dash thirty-four.
Okay.
And it's a substitute House Bill number six five three one.
Yeah, I wrote that down.
What is it again, six five three one?
Yes.
Yeah, with the expirations of all these bills and all that kind of stuff, I just, I wasn't comfortable answering questions for Bob today.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Okay, I'll see you guys in a month.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
All right, so item four then is now tabled for this month. And we will hopefully get, have more data on that for the month of March. So commission's okay with that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Alrighty, so then we are at. Electric charging stations.
Uh, you get zoning enforcement, Paul, does the commission want any updates on what I'm doing or?
Wait a minute, oh, you, but you know what, I, the agenda, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's kind of out of whack, I totally missed that. Okay, yes, zoning enforcement. Dan?
It blends in a little bit.
Yeah, certainly does.
Not, not too much of a change, uh, two, two new cases. One, potential, too many tenants living in a single-family house. And the other one was. Uh, the shed built without permits that needs to go to historic district. Uh, in terms of Boston Post Road. Where Matt is filing a notice of. Default, they didn't respond to our, our, our lawsuits when they were served. So Matt's gonna move for a judgment and then I might have to go on to the property, hire company and, and clean everything out, which I really, really don't wanna do.
Is, is this the, the area across from Coffey's, the dumpster and?
No, no, but the public contract. Why, sure, yeah.
Hey, hey Frank Marotta, could you, could you mute yourself, please?
I'm muted, I got it.
Okay.
Yes, it is, and it's frankly, unfortunately gotten worse. I, I don't quite understand what's going on. We, we served the lawsuit to both the company and at, at the, at the house and, and the property owner. And so, well, you know, I'm waiting for Matt, obviously the neighbor is. Exasperated at this point, but, um, you know, I'm just waiting for Matt to, to, to tell me what to do next. But other than that, I, I, I got about six, six or seven other cases kind of floating around. Two of them may need to escalate shortly because I'm not getting responses from, from the, the homeowners.
Okay. Do you?
Other than that.
Any, any update on the litigation on Hall's Road, the service station?
Nope, well, Kim put together the record and got it to Matt. I actually may ask you question, Jane, for recommendation, having trouble finding someone to do a transcript. I put a request in for a quote to a transcription service and they haven't got back to me. The old person that used to do it for Matt Willis no longer does it. I had a person in town do a transcript for ZBA and she doesn't wanna do it anymore after that. So, uh, Jane, if you know, if you have somebody who does transcripts?
Um, I don't. I don't, but there's someplace up in East Hartford that, that maybe I can look it up tomorrow and figure it out where it is.
That'd be great if you could, yeah, I, I contacted a place out of Bristol. Um, and they haven't got back to me, so I'm, uh, or actually Mike, well, Mike probably has people at the state that does for him. But yeah, Mike, I don't know if you know anybody who does transcripts either.
They do, but they're all state employees, I don't know if they do anything on the side.
Okay, well, if they do, I, 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 it seems like there's a, like everything else, a labor shortage on, on that front too, so. But you have to think of anything, let me know, that'd be really helpful. That's all I got on enforcement.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions of Dan about that or anything? Okay, now I can move on, discussion of zoning regulation changes. We had. Electric charging stations. Did everyone get to? Just at least read through some of the data that Dan sent out?
Yes, I did.
What are our thoughts?
Well, the, there's one that was labeled Matt Willis draft, is that for us?
I, I think that's the one, yes, after looking at all of it.
It wasn't necessarily, that's something I think he provided to the commission prior to me getting here, first go around. So I think that provided just to give another lens into a different way of. Setting up those, the regulation.
So.
I guess I'm curious.
The idea about these charging stations that we're going to regulate. We're regulating. Charging stations that can be used by anyone in the general public, right? Not, not anything that is specifically designated for employees or people in a house or anything like that. Because some of these got, got into that.
It would be, it would be for, say, if a, a business wanted to put it in for employees on a commercial piece of property, it would be for that. It wouldn't be for somebody who wants to put some, something in a house.
Well, it's, 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 it's not for a single. Private residence. But. The, the other thing that's, that you had some interest on was someone in a residential area who had a piece of property. And was interested in creating a charging station. And we don't have.
So I did meet with him on that, those are, turns out both in, in a commercial zone.
Yeah, those are in the C, C ten or C, they're in the C ten zone.
Yeah, C seven, C thirty.
C ten and C thirty.
That's somewhere down by the beach, isn't it?
Yeah, it's across.
So, yeah. It, it would be set up for all commercial, so all commercial properties. So if you want, it's, it's like. If, if, if a, a business wanted to put it in for its employees, yeah, I'd prob, I'd make them go. But if, you know, somebody, any residential neighborhood, if you just wanna put one in for your house, for your car, that, that would just go through an electric permit through the, the building department.
Okay, okay. So, so what we're talking about, the regulation that we're talking about is in a commercial space. Not residential, but in a commercial space that would regulate. New construction and or addition on to, let's say, like Big Y. If they wanted to put in two or three charging stations, it would regulate that kind of an application?
Correct, yeah, it's so, kind of what these different ones, I try, I trying to wanna get a feel for you is, is, you know, how you wanna regulate it. And at what level and depth do you wanna regulate it? Do you wanna have certain, you know, I don't know, five? Do you wanna do five or less? There's an avenue to do that administratively through the zoning department, you know, you know, based on parking and where it's going and, and safety. Do you wanna have all of them come before you? It, it, that, that's kind of the level that I, I'm, I'm looking at now. And then I can try to craft some more things or provide some more things that more closely align with, with how you guys feel it should be done. You know, some towns that I know like Tesla, they wanna, you know, do it administratively up to a larger number of chargers, like ten or something like that. You obviously may not feel comfortable with that. So you gotta, I gotta decide what your comfort range is and what parameters would you be comfortable with me doing accessories for? So if you're like three or less, okay, well, you know, as long as it doesn't affect parking in certain ways or traffic flows in certain ways. Or, or something akin to that, or the number of parking spots that needs to be available for a, a business. You know, and obviously then, you know, traffic and safety all come in, in, into play and stuff like that. So I, I feel confident administratively, a small, small number of these can be done administratively. It's just a question of what, when you guys wanna step in for a larger application, if you think that's necessary.
But I, I think we need to have some sort of guidelines in place at least that we. You know, that, that you can go by so that, you know, not every single one comes to us. And, and with the infrastructure bill, I think there's going to be a tremendous amount of that coming to us soon. So, so the question is, is like operations, safety, how does, how does the connection get made with Eversource? You know, what are, what are the permits? I mean, there should be a process that we go through.
I mean, so you're just looking at the use of the, the property. Don't, don't, don't worry about how it gets hooked up with Eversource, don't worry about the electrical aspects. They're gonna have to pull permits through the building department and Mark's gonna have to, Mark, the building official will ensure that it's safely built. From, from a electrical standpoint and building safety standpoint. You're just looking at where they could go, you know, how that might affect the, the current approval or parking situation and, and things of that nature. So if you're like, okay, three or less, and these are kind of the constraints and what we wanna see, you know, not be affected negatively or, 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 or what should be added. If you do add those things, that's kind of what you're thinking about. And then, you know, the next level is a special permit and you gotta do X, Y, and Z, provide a site plan and, and that kind of stuff. And, and so I think if you look at these different regulations, each, each municipality or city is handling things a little differently.
Just a little bit differently, but they're, they're primarily auxiliary uses, right? They're not specific. They're, they're, they're an auxiliary use to existing parcels, right, Dan? From what I read?
Accessory use?
Accessory use.
Yeah, accessory use, yeah, a, a lot of towns are handling it that way.
Right.
It really.
But now, now you're.
I don't like reinventing, but it's really how you guys wanna handle it. Um, if you think some of these things might work, we can certainly cherry pick.
We have a regulation that says parking lots by themselves are not an approved use. And that's because of the danger of what happens in the beach areas. So we don't, we don't just allow parking lots. And I don't think we should probably change it because to have this use, if it's gonna be. It, it's gonna have to be a separate use. So to me, it would be better to say that for now anyway, that they're accessory to some other use. And that they only be in a parking lot, they, they shouldn't be along the street. I, I just can see, because we don't have that many parking spaces along streets. And where we do, it's usually pretty congested. And so I, I just can't see that the idea of, of saying that a person, because that's getting it into the, onto the public property possibly.
Right.
I'd rather see it in, in a, in a commercial use that's already developed, that has a parking lot. And, you know, I would think that they could put in a certain number without getting zoning commission's approval. You know, maybe two or three. And then after that, they'd have to get our approval. But, you know, it's more about the, the look of it and, and whether it's gonna mess up traffic patterns and things like that. I definitely don't want any internally lit signs advertising these things. You know, on commercial property. So they're gonna have to have their own way of telling people that they exist. But I don't really wanna see them on stanchions and stuff where people are pulling in new customers by an internally lit sign. And I like the idea that they would be in operation. Uh, because they're on commercial property, not in parked in somebody's yard, but they would be in operation from eight to eight. I like the, that limitation that Matt Willis put in. I don't know whether there's trash removal expected for these sites, whether that's because there are people are there for a while. But I would presume that a commercial operation will already have their own existing trash arrangement. So these would be required to kind of fit in with that.
And would you want something like in the regs saying if you are installing trash receptacles, do you indicate that on your site plan? And some sort of maintenance, maintenance, uh, uh, understanding of, of, you know, just so they don't put trash cans in.
These are gonna be accessory uses to an already existing commercial use, won't there be?
There should be.
Their own trash, I mean, maybe I'm not thinking of all the potential commercial uses there, there are, but.
Yeah, I, I hope, I guess my, my answer is I hope, I just, you know, I'm just trying to get a feel for what exactly, you know, how far you might wanna go.
Yeah. Here's a question.
If it's connecting a residential property, kind of like we already have the regs for a commercial use next to a residential property, do you want, you know, street? You know, things like that.
Hey, hey, Dan, if we already have, what, what about these lots that we have a lot of existing residential homes on commercial lots that are just there like that? So, and then somebody wants to come and add a power station to their commercial lot, because that's what it is. But it's a, it's a single-family dwelling that the lot's being utilized as, does that become an accessory use on that lot?
An accessory to commercial use is not accessory to.
Yeah, so, no, I would just, yeah, I think Jane just basically said what I would, was gonna say. I, I would treat that as just of, I, I wouldn't send that through zoning like it was commercial. It would just be for a single-family residence. I would take the use of that property, I guess, into consideration at that point. And since it's used as a single-family household, I would just permit it as such.
Yeah, and then it would be for that household only.
Correct, correct, yes, or, I mean, if you had a guest, I guess, yeah, if you had a guest over and they're.
Yeah, but you can't have a little sign out saying, you know, ten bucks, you can charge his car.
Yeah, absolutely, it's just like if somebody was like, pull over, I'll sell you gasoline for two dollars to Alan if you stop at my house. You, you know, you wouldn't be allowed to do that.
So that would be private use, you know, the owners and guests or, you know, this is where I think there will have to be some regulations prepared. So we have the distinction between the two.
That's what I was kind of getting at, is that like, is it open-ended if we're not so specific?
No, right, exactly.
We can have a regulation, but then let Dan administer it, that's the idea.
Right.
Not every regulation, you know, has to be administered by the commission itself.
Right, but, but we, to your point, Jane, we do need to have those, that guideline set up. Is that this is the regulation and Dan can legislate supposedly to that.
Are two, are two charging stations a good point of, of sort of starting point?
I think that's good because I, in a lot of cases, they're, they reference in some of the other towns a percentage. So if there's, there's something going in and if they have. a percentage. So, if there's, there's something going in, and if they have, let's say, a fifty car lot, they're saying ten percent, no more than, or an NTE, not to exceed ten percent of the existing total for electric charging stations.
Each charging station has two outlets, right? One on each side?
Right.
So, two charging stations equal four cars charging.
That's, that to me is a good number for, 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 to start.
I think so, for us.
Okay, so, charging stations means four cars? We just, we're, I just need to make sure that I understand that. Because when I think, I don't have a lot of car, I don't know anything about them. I think a charging station, I think one charging station per car. So, if we're saying four cars
Mike.
Yeah, I just, I, I want to touch on one thing. I was just, I agree with, with Jane. I mean, I'm trying to figure out where, where these are gonna go in town. I mean, where I see them, they're either in large, uh, public parking facilities, garages, or on commercial lots. So, it seems to me, in, in my mind, the only place I see these really going is maybe two spots in the Big Y complex, maybe on this other side, their hideaway, I don't know. But we, we, we certainly can have these in a residential area. Uh, with respect to how many spots per charging station, I think the technology may change in the future where you may just have one stanchion and you can run lines out. So, instead of designating charging stations, maybe we should just designate how many parking spaces can be used administratively, or they have to cover for us. Uh, but I, I, I just don't see these going in our town in a very large, uh, array of places. I think, I think the main area off Hall's Road, maybe if the town does something with the parking down at the beach, they may put some in the public, uh, parking spot down there. But I, I just don't see these being widespread throughout the town.
I, I would agree, although Tesla is waiting in the wings.
And I, I looked at the stuff Dan sent us a while back, so I think maybe with, maybe Dan could just draft something instead of just like throwing all these ideas in the wall now. Maybe Dan could just kind of take our ideas and write something up for us, and maybe we just parse that a little bit and get this thing passed because we've been talking about this for over a year now, and I, I just don't, I mean, we're not East Line, we're not Old Sabre, these things aren't going all over the place. I think we're going to approve this thing. They're gonna put some in at the Big Y, and then we won't see any more built for a long time.
Good point.
I thought the same about fax machines.
But I saw in practice there, we didn't have fax machines.
Yeah, but, but they're gone now.
Carbon paper.
Yeah, yeah. What was, what was the one that you used to turn and it used to have purple ink and it used to smell so good?
That was a mimeograph.
Mimeograph. Whoever thought Xerox, right?
So, Dan, maybe, and maybe I can help you a little bit, put something together.
I don't think I've ever seen a Tesla line that's not internally lit.
Hold on, we, we missed that. Dan, go again.
Would you name this or mine?
No, go ahead, Dan.
I was gonna say, I'd love to take a first crack at it with Jane, uh, if she's open to doing that. And then, um, whatever we do, you know, we can see if, if we want Matt to look at it real quick, just to make sure I didn't miss anything. Go with me, not you, Jane. Um, okay, yeah, so what I'll do then is, uh, I'll reach out to Jane, either end of this week or beginning of next, uh, put something together, see what she thinks, and then, um, we'll, we'll, we'll take from there and try to get something before you guys in March.
If, if you can, um, send it out before the meeting so we can kind of get some comments in our own head before we discuss it at the meeting.
Does Tesla even have signs that are not internally lit?
Tesla's, uh, stanchions or pumps are, are, or, uh, whatever you call them, are lit.
From the inside?
Right. What do you mean, from the inside?
Well, Jane, we don't have, we prohibit internally lit signs in the town of Old Line. We don't mind them having spotlights on them.
Right.
Don't like having the lights from the inside.
Their actual stanchions are, are lit. That, that Tesla's down the side. They're, they're very, very handsome. They're, they're not, they're not, um, they're not something you wouldn't want to look at. They, they're very, very The part, if you, if you want to, if you want to see a, a Tesla, I'll call it a, a, a charging location. I think it has ten stanchions in it. If you're coming ninety-five southbound in New London, where the Marshalls and Shopright and Home Goods is in that plaza, you can see it right off the highway if you're, if you're southbound. It's right kind of next to Marshalls and by Chili's. It's right there. It's, it's
Especially at night because they're lit up.
Jane can see that from her house.
Oh. Well, well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a very tasteful, uh, application that they have.
Well, that
It is tasteful, but if we have a, if we have a regulation that they can't have lit signs
We do.
We're gonna have to address that.
We have to fix it because, um, we have to make some adjustments there then, because, and you have to be careful because every time you adjust these things, you get a lot of stuff you never expected, and it isn't all handsome. So, we have to
Right. Right.
Yeah, so at this point, the internally, internally illuminated sign would be against our regulations. And if they would like to put those in our town, they'll have to leave the light bulbs out. And, and, and illuminate them externally. So, um,
Fine, yeah.
What you guys want, that's, that's what they'll, they'll have to deal with, um, if they want
If they're only supposed to be on between eight and eight, there wouldn't be that many hours where those internally lit signs would be needed.
I don't like the idea
Jane, I will not grant a CEO if they're internally lit. I don't want you, uh, I don't want another I told you so.
I do like the idea, Jane, that you have of having it be open when the business is open as opposed to someone coming in on the middle of the night looking for a charging port, driving aimlessly through town when everything's closed.
Correct.
Because our
That'll, that's, that's gonna be, that has to be regulated in so those things can go off.
So, what do you think that, um, businesses, uh, will feel about these if the general public can use them and not customers of their, their properties?
I don't know. Big Y and Old Sabre has two or, two or four of them.
I don't, I don't think the business is gonna care because they're making money regardless.
Yeah.
So, if we, so if we approve this, Tesla's gonna have to pay the landlord or the owner of the property, right? I mean, I, I don't think the owner of the property is gonna care, uh, if it's a customer or not because they're getting paid by Tesla.
Yeah, I think
I don't know if they make a commission off it or what.
Uh, well, and I believe, I believe with Tesla, um, the notwithstanding what agreement they have with the property owner, but with Tesla, the, the car itself actually, once it's plugged in, the car itself communicates directly with and is billed by Tesla. There's no, there's no third party. There, it does not, it does not go through the owner of the property. And then, it's, it's a direct charge from Tesla. Now, what, what agreement Tesla makes with the property owner, different story.
And I guess the only thing I could point out is, the, the property owner is gonna have to welcome them onto the property. But also, it takes twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes or something to charge your car. So, a place like Big Y may consider somebody getting off the highway, plugging in to charge their car. They'll probably walk in, get a drink or something, or a sandwich while they're waiting. That, that's one of the thoughts. Or if you had a restaurant, they would, you know, eat at the restaurant while their car charges or something like that.
Yes. Tesla had applied for the, or, or came to us three years ago, maybe, three or four years ago. Pulled out early, but they, because we did not have a regulation. Uh, but they were actually being welcomed by the, the property owner of that plaza. So, there is, I believe there is a benefit to having them in that plaza. Otherwise, I don't think the owner would be, um, be so entertaining.
I, I would ask, uh, roughly when this, this might get approved already.
By Tesla?
Yeah.
They're, they'll be the first to jump, and that's gotta come before us, because that'll be beyond the two spaces.
But, but regardless of Tesla,
Right.
you want to set it up holistically so, you know, you're happy with whoever comes in with a proposed charging station. Um, so, you know, this isn't for Tesla, it's for any charging station that wants to come in.
So, so let me ask you this. So, let me ask you this question. Is the Tesla model, um, a good straw man to use for our regulation?
Well, Tesla's set me Dan Berry's regulation, and I included that in your packet.
Right.
I mean, I guess I'll reiterate again. Whatever you guys think, that's the best way to go. Um, it, it doesn't work out, or there's, you know, it, it becomes problematic at some point, or there needs to be a change to make it a little easier to use, we can always do that later. So, you know, I would, I'll construct the reg with Jane, but whatever you guys are comfortable with is what we should pass. And if it needs to change in the future, we'll do that. Um.
Do we allow as a commission any other accessory uses to be permitted administratively, or would this be the only one?
Uh, you can allow any accessory use you want, uh, but for, right now, we're just looking at an EV charging station as accessory.
No, I'm saying administratively, if this was, if, let's say, these two pumps, this, which we're, it's calling it an, we're only allowing it as, on a lot as an accessory use, right? This charging station, that you can approve administratively. Is there any other accessory uses that you're allowed to approve administratively? Am I saying that correct?
Yes.
I think there are.
Well, most of them are residential lots, sheds, uh, accessory structure, if it meets all the setbacks. I mean, those are accessory things I approve all the time. Um, if the regs are set up that I can approve something as an accessory use, I can do it. And then it has a threshold that it becomes a special permit, that, that's not an issue.
Okay, so, but everything in the commercial zone is a special permit, so, is that right?
No, the, my understanding from the board right now is, uh, four car spaces, up to four car spaces, uh, can be approved administratively as long as you meet the regs we set out. Uh, anything over that will have to go for a special permit, where you guys have a little more legislative, uh, leeway in terms of, uh, conditioning, you know, whatever proposal they have. For me, it'll be, this is what you want to do, doesn't meet our regs, yes or no? For you guys, it's a little, you have, you have more legislative, uh, authority, you know, you know, in order to say, oh, we don't really like, we don't think that might be safe in that setup. Could you move two of these parking spaces over there? Or could you eliminate those two? Because we, we think it, it might, uh, negatively i- impact the traffic, or, or something like that.
What about the
For me Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What about the commuter parking places, too?
Those are controlled by the state of Connecticut, and the state of Connecticut can, uh, circumvent zoning. And they've already done so on electric charging. Uh, if you go to the DEEP facility, they already have electric charging spaces there. But the, the state can, um, circumvent zoning, so they can obviously do that.
Okay, thank you.
And I, and I hate to say this, but I think I, I'd only want one station with two parking spots to be, anything over that to be, I don't know, maybe that's just me, but are we going to four versus two, or you guys have any opinions on that?
Let's start with
Oh, like, my only opinion is, uh, you're gonna fight the battle between all the people who want to do the electric charging stations, want as many to be done administratively through me as possible. Uh, because it's a clearer, easier, simpler thing
It costs less money. I can understand that, okay.
But it's really up to you. Whatever number you feel is comfortable, that's what we'll start with. You know, I'll work on something with Jane, but if you guys at the next meeting, I think that's an easy, we'll, we'll set up the regs, so X amount of cars can be done administratively, and over that is a special permit. Uh, and, you know, we can change that and, and discuss that, uh, over the next month or so, um, to see, you know, what your comfort level or threshold would be.
Uh, one other comment, uh, we're gonna limit this just to cars, uh, no, no large commercial vehicles.
Certainly can do that, yeah. Yeah, that, that, see, that's the type of thing that, you know, I need to hear from you guys so that we can specify that in our regulations. Or rather prohibit, uh, you know, the larger vehicles.
Or say a vehicle that fits in the space. I don't know. It's not, I mean, there's some people who own, and to your point, there's people who have a car, but it's registered commercially because it's owned by a business. But it would still be a, it'd still be a regular car, per se, you know? So, I don't know if we craft it in such a way, like, a pickup truck that might be electric, if it's owned by a business, it's got a commercial registration on it, but technically, it's, it's still a passenger vehicle.
Yeah, we could, we could say it needs to fit in a standard
There you go.
Parking spot.
Exactly.
I mean, or eight by, eighteen by nine, if you can't park in the parking spot, you can't charge your car. That, or the vehicle. I mean, that may allow some, like, larger vans, but I think it, it would easily prevent, you know, I think what you're afraid of. Well, yeah, 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 certainly you can't do an RV, so.
To Michael's point, you've got a whole slew of new pickup trucks that are on the verge of being introduced that are electric. Got panel vans that are gonna be introduced very, very soon. So, let's just make sure that the regulation is written correctly, because you'll have pickup trucks that are residential, and you have pickup trucks that are commercial, so, but
Yeah, but I think, in my opinion, I don't think we want to prohibit, uh, you know, a guy who owns a pickup truck that's, I don't know, uh, Mohawk Construction or something
Oh, I agree. I totally agree.
That's why I was saying, fits in the parking spot.
Right.
If you can't fit one parking spot, it's not allowed.
Well, a small dump truck, a small dump truck will fit in a parking lot, in a parking space.
I don't know what, I don't know what better metric to, uh, to use. Um, again, I'm not gonna be sitting next to the electric charging station. Um, so if somebody takes a picture of this giant RV parked across four spots, you know, that's easier. Um,
Right.
I just, I don't know how I would. And I don't think we're, we're not at a state in the technology where they're making dump trucks.
Right.
Um, you know, we got F-150s, we got cars
That's next year's.
And eventually do semis. Um, so, I mean, this would certainly prevent a semi tractor trailer truck or a large RV. Um, in five to ten years from now, if
They are So, they are, Tesla is doing semis. Just so that you know, FedEx.
You guys saw the transformer ones, right? They're, they're
You're not gonna be coming to Old Line to do that.
And then they, they leave the parking spot and it enlarges.
That's very, very true. The, the semis will go to a depot. That's where they're gonna have their, um, their charging stations.
At the glove, it's, we must acquit. Fits in the spot, it gets electricity.
Where have I heard that? I've heard that somewhere before about a glove. I just
I, I think the short of it is, uh, let's maybe just go with that metric from now. If it's an issue, we can change the regulations. It's not like a building, it's like they're a parked truck. If the trucks are a problem, we'll change the regs.
Well, here's, here's where we go with, here's where we go with that. We write the regulation that, that can be approved administratively. If something comes in that's beyond that, comes to us.
Yeah, but we still have to have the parameters when it comes to us, too.
Correct, I'm saying, right.
Yeah. Yeah, I want, and I want administratively, I want to make sure on my end that you guys are very comfortable with those parameters, because it's
Correct.
They need them, I'm giving the permit, um.
That's, then that's what we develop.
Okay, so I will start putting something together. I'll reach out to Jane, we'll go through some stuff. I'll disseminate it to you, and we'll talk more in depth, uh, tear it apart, uh, at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, let's all run out and get electric cars. Okay, we're good with that? Approval of minutes, minutes of the January tenth, twenty twenty-two public hearing and regular meeting. I have read through those and didn't find anything that's really
That's really
Out of whack.
Out of whack.
Is anyone else any comment? If not, I'll take a motion that we approve the January tenth, twenty twenty-two zoning commission meeting, public hearing and regular meeting minutes? zoning commission meeting, public hearing and regular meeting minutes?
I would most approve the minutes of the January 10th meeting as written.
Okay, Alan, accept the second.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay.
Michael Barnes is the second, right?
Mike Miller.
Miller.
Miller. Mike Miller second.
We got a Mike and a Michael. You can't.
Right. You have a Mike and then you have a Michael Peter. If you, you know, you want to.
I was, I was waiting for it. For whatever reason, everybody loves to throw my middle name in there.
Get the, get the complete iteration.
So, so are we gonna consider this opting out of the accessory apartment thing?
Yes, Jane, I was going to let you know that at miscellaneous. I had to coordinate with Tim on that because the accessory apartment opt-out also requires a vote of the board. I am sending that out to the neighboring municipalities and council of governments by the end of the week. And we'll have that to receive and set at next meeting and hopefully we will vote on that in April. I have to talk to Matt about that as well. I don't believe our accessory apartment regulations become null and void until January 1st of 2023. So we should still be covered. And then we can work on accessory apartment regulations in the fall or summer, depending on schedule.
Okay, these are the ADUs, right? The 2129?
Yes, correct. And so I think we could liberalize the the accessory apartment regs to some degree, maybe in the larger zones. But I think when we first talked about it, Jane brought up about, and I think you all agreed about how this would not work at all in the beach communities with the no parking requirements, et cetera.
Right. Okay. So we went from six to eight. We can come back to seven correspondence. And I think we've pretty much exhausted any correspondence, Dan?
Uh, the only piece of correspondence we had was in relation to, I believe, 224 Short Road and we we forwarded that on to you.
Okay. Okay, anything else by anyone?
I I got a question about that that eighteen month timeframe that they, that permits are allowed. Is that, that, that seems observantly short.
That is a specific regulation. If you would like to read it, it is.
It's a what? I'm sorry, an old lime specific regulation?
Yeah, state statute zoning permits are good for five years with a five-year extension. Old lime specifically is eighteen months with, I believe, an eighteen-month extension. That's the old line specific.
How you, how do you supersede a state statute? You can do that?
This is kind of, the state sets up the bones in this situation and old lime filled in the bones with something more restrictive, yeah.
Yeah, because to me, eighteen months, from a developer standpoint or a land use standpoint, like it'll take some permits 24 months to work their way through a structures fill and dredge permit. So they came to the town first and got a permit. They'd be coming back again for a renewal of that permit. In the meantime, I'm just waiting for a DEP permit or something. I just, it puts a burden on on a landowner. I'm not talking about Frank Marata specifically. I'm just thinking about any landowner for that matter who has an approval on a property. I don't know. Just know if anybody had any comments.
I mean, old line is consistent in a way because it's for variants of special permits and site development plans. The regulation that deals with this is, uh, for special permits for you guys, 9.6.4. If you want to check that out. I I can give you my opinion sometime, but it's, you know, this is what the the board in old line has decided to do. You want to change it, that's certainly something we could add to the docket.
I don't know how the other members feel. I don't know, Jane, I think you've been on here the longest. Was this always been that way as far as you're concerned?
It's been a, it's been a long time that it's been that standard. And, you know, nine out of 10 have been able to meet that standard. The most common reason that people don't meet the standard isn't, isn't because of COVID-19, which is definitely unusual. It's financing.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
But, but the, but, you know, again, it's, it's partly that the community wants people to not just land bank all the property in town. They actually wanting these projects to go forward. And I think that's the reason behind having another bite at the apple, so to speak, after, you know, eighteen months or two years or whatever, is so that there, you know, town continues to adopt regulations and refine. We may be not doing it as much as we used to, but we were always refining and figuring out things that we should have known about, but we didn't. So there was just a feeling you didn't want to grandfather things in for a super long time. And because he wanted to be able to take into other development that was happening, other road improvements that were needed, things like that. So just didn't want to make it forever. Nineteen years just seems incredible.
I thought that same thing when they said that. It was like maybe five years, maybe a year, maybe two years, but nineteen, damn. Somebody went for it.
So somebody, I think, sneaks something in, but never mind.
They at least.
But, but really, we haven't had too much trouble with that eighteen-month period because they, you know, we have routinely granted extensions if people have good reason. But it could be a year, I mean, a year longer or or three years or something. I don't think that would change things too much for everybody.
I, I mean, you know, in development on my own end in certain circumstances, like I've had approvals from other projects a couple of years that I still haven't been able to get my financing for for specific developments. And and it cost me an arm and a leg to go back to zoning again if I was the, you know, in that position. I just, I'm just seeing it because I I've seen permits come and go and lapse and sometimes it's hurt people. It's, and sometimes it benefits other people. I just didn't know how everybody else felt about it. I thought it was observantly short, at least 24 months. But I'm up for whatever. It's not broken, don't fix it. I just, I just, just with one.
I think, I think some people, they're sort of more certain of their financing and things like that before they come. And others are just sort of feeling the waters. But, no, I I'd be, I'd be up for considering it longer. There's, you know, more hurdles to jump over now than there were 10 years ago or 20 years ago.
Good.
Life is more complicated.
No, that's for another day. I just was wondering.
It, it, well, I'll keep it on the agenda if you want. That's a very easy change to make. It's just substituting some numbers. So let me know. And I guess in that same vein, and this is a new, I I had in my last town when it was five and 10 years for expiration of permit. And I guess part of this is to Jane, because you've been on the board longest, Jane. Was it routine at any point for staff to bring in the permits that were expiring and have you guys expire them or not? Because that was an issue I ran into in Portland where, you know.
Dan. You know, that that we ever had to have a whole truckload of of permits coming in that were expiring.
Yeah, because technically, everything that you approved, if you haven't had a public hearing with notice to the owner, it's still not expired.
Yeah. That part I wasn't aware of. I don't think that was, we never practiced that particular item about having to give another, another notice if it was expired. But, you know, you take Cherrystones, for example, you know, Cherrystones has got a permit and it's just sitting there. And, you know, we didn't expect it to be sitting there, but it is just sitting there. And it's, who knows, a whole host of reasons that it's sitting there, but it is.
Were you talking about the use, Jane, or the actual permit for construction?
Well, we had, we did a permit for construction for for redoing Cherrystones and cleaning up that whole thing. And, but it never happened and it's still not happening. Trees are growing through the building and stuff like that. So it's, it's kind of a toss-up. You do, because we also are a mechanism and we don't want to just be used for ha-has to see whether something can get approved either. We, we really do want to have an idea that we are shaping the town when we're giving these approvals. So I think there's a balance somewhere.
That, that's a little bit of my concern. So if Cherrystones came back and filed a permit based on this approval, I have to approve it. I mean, the regs are specific about, and and Jane, I'd be interested if you went back and looked at that, what you thought. They're pretty specific about what you need to do in order to.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that little procedure because I thought they just plain expired. Because usually people came after they expired and and were asking for them to be resuscitated again. But I know there, there have been changes, you know, when, when we've adopted things. There have been changes that have sort of come in that I'm not always aware of, yeah.
Yeah, look at that, Jane, because it says following a hearing with notice to the owner and permit holder. So that's my concern. I, you know, if I I had a permit from 20 years ago that was approved and I saw that, I would just point to that. You know, I'm obviously not a lawyer like you guys are. Maybe there's something I'm missing, but, um, it's just something to keep in mind because I was. I was going back to Portland for a while and.
Haven't been acted on.
I don't even know how we would figure that out now, Jane. That's one of the reasons I break this up is it's like, this is not something I don't think the office administratively has ever kept track of.
Like DEP just extended their, their permits used to be three-year permits. And now, like their structures fill and dredge permit generally be good for three years and they moved them back. And COPs used to be good for three years. Now they're good for five years. They've increased it by two years for whatever reason on structures fill and dredge and on COPs. I don't know. I just think maybe we should increase it a little bit. No comment about the other.
What I'll do is I'll put down the agenda, just a quick discussion. You guys can think about it. If you say 24 months for both next time or 30 months, let me know. I can easily write that up and we can put that in the rate, a rate change vote. That's, that's a quick and easy one. I'm 100% in favor of.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And also, there's just one last thing. There are a lot of references in this book and some other things that like look here or look there. They are no longer right. The page numbers are not right. So I'm almost torn that complete redo of the regs almost needs to be done. But at some point, if if I have some time, I might try to get a list of those to just go back and make those minor corrections. Or I may even see if Matt may allow us to do that administratively. Because some, there's references to things that either don't exist or are not on that page anymore. But that's all I got tonight.
Okay.
I'll let you go. I'll stop talking.
Okay, so I guess that covered the miscellaneous area.
Should we get a word of introduction on Sherry? How we doing, Sherry?
Yeah, Sherry is our newest member.
I'm hanging in there.
Sherry, maybe if you can give us a thirty-second kind of introduction of yourself.
Oh, thirty seconds introduction.
Is that too long?
No, it's not too long.
Too short, Paul, way too short.
No, I've lived here for 12 years. In this particular spot, I used to live in Connecticut a long time ago, back in the 80s. And lived there for 10 years. So I guess I could say I'm a native Connecticut person. But really, I'm from Kansas and you can hear my long A's, so when I speak, you'll notice it. Well, I was on an alternate on the zoning board. Alternative appeals, excuse me. And so I was there for two years. And I ran for the position and I won the position, actually got the votes, but didn't get the majority. So majority rules on that, on the boards when you're an alternate. So I'm delighted to be able to help and be on the town. And I don't know what else to say. Let's see.
We are, we are excited to have you with us. We really are. Welcome, welcome again.
No, thanks.
Whereabouts in Kansas were you from?
Are you familiar with the area?
Well, I went to school, I went to school in Kansas.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Prairie Village area.
Prairie Village.
Hills.
So you were closer to Kansas City?
I was on the Kansas side, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Loved it out there. Best four years of my life.
Yeah, beautiful town. Where'd you go to school?
Emporia.
Ah, okay, sure. Good school, good school.
Yep.
All right.
Alrighty, well, thank you, everyone. With that said, I will take in a motion for the adjournment of this meeting.
So move?
Okay. And second? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, I'm assuming no one's opposed and no one's abstaining. Good night, everyone, and thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Everybody.
Bye, Dan. Thank you very much. Bye.
Bye to everybody. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Bye.